All right, thank you everybody for coming out. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, the La Junta City Council. Today is August 4th, 2025. The time is now 6:00 PM. Would you all rise for our invocation? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of this town we love, for its hardworking people, quiet streets, and big hearts. As we meet tonight, guide our decisions to reflect the strength and spirit of La Junta. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. If you'll stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever-ecological.
Mrs. Schofield, roll call, please.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Stoker.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochoa.
Pantoia.
Here.
Ricca.
Here.
All right, minutes of the previous meeting. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to move approval of the minutes as submitted.
So.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? There's not a last for your vote. And that passes unanimously with everyone here tonight. Moving on to citizen participation. You have five minutes. Come up, state your name and address for those watching online. Now we'll start the timer.
Hi, my name is Bethany Binder. I live at 802 Carson. And I am actually here on behalf of Otero College. I work at the International Department, so with all of our students. And we have gotten our soccer and volleyball players in. So I just wanted to reach out to everybody and ask if they wanted to be a friendly family for our international students. And I even brought applications for people. So if you want to contact me at the college, my number is 719-384-6805. Or you can email me if you want. Just, you have to fill this out. I have a couple cool events to meet up with them. We ask you to meet with them at least once a month, just so that they have another connection to our community, just besides the college. So that's all I got, if any of you guys want them.
Is that all you have, Bethany?
Yes.
No, is like all the paperwork you have?
Oh, yeah, I just have locations, so you can see what it asks. It asks for who's in your family, their age, what you're interested in, like music, sports, hiking, gardening, cooking, anything like that. And then I have one that the kids fill out, too.
I was just making sure if you had maybe a copy for Adrian and Gary, so they can have info, too. We'll see what's left after.
I am, yes, thank you.
Send me an email.
Oh, cool, okay. I can do that.
We have tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen participation? Set right up. There's water right there.
How's it, everybody? My name's Brad Rowe. I am the Veteran Outreach Coordinator for the Staff Sergeant Fox Suicide Prevention Grant Program through the VA, and I'm an employee at Volleyball. So I've spoke to the body before. I just wanted to give you an update of where my program sits. It is, right now, it was a three-year program, started in September of 2022. So in September 2025, the pilot program ends if it does not get funded. Right now, it's sitting at the, on the desk of the Veteran Affairs Committee in the Senate. So fortunately, we were able to get some additional funding to go through, hopefully to the end of December if the funding lasts. But we shall see. Do you guys have any pull with your senators? Please call, because we've worked our tails off for three years trying to reach veterans in our communities, from Fowler to Walsh, and up into Kyler Kelly. And I can tell you, I'm pretty proud that you mentioned Veteran Services, and my name's gonna come up in the conversation. So I just wanted to give you guys an update, let you know where it stands. And I'm sure if Volleyball, if it discontinues, then I'm no longer able to do my job. But I'm gonna pass out some cards. If you guys need anything from me, you know how to reach me, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I may be a little biased, but Brad said it. Veterans come up, and everybody's sending them that way. So that's definitely been a good program for the last three years, and hopefully it can continue.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Anyone else for citizen participation? No? All right. Moving on, community event announcements. Do you have any community event announcements?
Bethany already mentioned it, but I was just gonna say the Otero students are coming back, and classes start on the 18th. So if you're watching this and you're thinking of taking classes, now's the time to register. We do have quite the influx of people, and parents coming to our community, welcome them. It's a huge part of our, our community and our economy and everything. So just looking forward to having, having people back on campus, and faculty start up again tomorrow. So, there you go. That's all I got.
Thank you. I had an email come through right before this meeting. Normally, we get some snail mail in, but this, this year, they're doing it a little bit different. It says, Dear Mayor Ayala and La Junta City Council, on behalf of the City of Rocky Ford, it is my honor to invite you and all the residents of La Junta to join us for the 148th Arkansas Valley Fair. While Rocky Ford is proud to be home to the fairgrounds, the celebration has always belonged to the entire Arkansas Valley. It's a shared tradition that stretches across the Lower Arkansas River and East Highway 50 corridor. A time when all of us come together to celebrate our heritage, our people, and the strength of our rural communities. We especially invite you to attend the Arkansas Valley Fair Parade on Friday, August 15th, at 10:00 AM in downtown Rocky Ford, with the parade float or as spectators. It's the highlight of the week, full color, full of color, community spirit, and small-time charm. And while we're keeping being delight-hearted, Councilman Stoker narrowly beat me in the watermelon eating contest at La Sandia Project last month. I'm looking for a rematch at this year's fair, and I welcome any additional challengers from La Junta to join in on the fun. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions or would like to coordinate your attendance. We look forward to seeing you there. Respectfully, Duane Gurley, Mayor of Rocky Ford.
I will point out that Mayor Gurley is 0-2 against La Junta City Council.
At recycling and at eating watermelon.
We filmed both.
The other one, it's already passed, but I want to say Police in the Park was a great event. Unfortunately, for the first 30 to 40 minutes, it was a rainstorm, but right after that, the event continued. We had a lot of young kids there. They won prizes from hats to bicycles. There were some Nerf wars, there was a jump house, there was a lot of great things there. The thing that I was most proud of is we had our explorers out. And the explorers are from age 14 to 18, and they're in the process of maybe becoming law enforcement for their career. Our code officer right now is a former explorer, so it's a good program. And if anyone's interested, they can contact Brian Lovato, and he can set them on their way with that. So it was a great event, great job by Todd. Dispatch was there, all the officers, they had the bikes out. It was a really good event. And then the other one that I wanted to talk about was, me and Mal went a little bit back and forth. I'm gonna call it the public budget outreach, the event we had at the senior center. You know, there was, this was the second year we had it. There was a little bit more people than the last year, not by much, but there was. And, you know, I talked to a couple of ladies, and they were like, well, we thought there was gonna be some speeches given, and then we would go back and forth. They said, you know, anybody here, you can ask anything of. You can ask them what their plans are for the year, you can ask them how their departments work. And the lady said, well, I wanna, I wanna know about dogs, and how many dogs are getting captured. I said, there's Todd, go talk to Todd right there. And then she said, well, I also want to know about what businesses are coming to town. I said, well, there's Pam Duney right there, you go talk to Pam. So when she, before she left, she let me know that she was very happy with the answer she was given, and she was glad that she was able to navigate and just talk to them about what it is that she wanted to know about. So hopefully, we can kind of tweak it a little bit to make it more friendly to everybody next year. So if you have any input on that, make sure that you let me know. I think that, you know, it's a great event, and it just kicks off our budget process. You know, it starts getting people thinking about, okay, well, I don't really understand what this department does. And you got your chance to talk to them, see what they do, how much they spend, what that looks like. So I think it's a great event, and hopefully, we continue doing that into the future. Any other community event announcements?
I'd just like to add, I appreciated all the equipment that the different departments brought, and I thought it was a great show and tell, and I appreciated getting to ask questions of people. And I know that it is perhaps frustrating, I know people put a lot of time into being there, and I'm hoping that, like, we'll build some momentum for this, this event. I think, I think it could be really good. And I appreciate you having the story about, you know, somebody who had specific questions got them answered and left happy. So I, I hope that we will nail it, and that our city manager...
Backup works, huh?
Yeah. Big enough budget.
Yeah. No, that's true. Okay. We're running out of time. It's okay.
Yeah. It's because of the section.
Oh, it's circling. I'm thinking. Hello? Use your outside.
Turn it off. Turn it back on.
It's the only thing I know how to do. Well, in a word, persist, and thank you, everyone who was there. That's all.
Did it go back?
And we're back.
We're back. I think Paula was gonna say something for...
It was just, it's already passed, but a shout-out to Jerry Gonzalez from Jerry's Painting and his young people that were there. They sponsored a first responders luncheon last week, and it was nicely attended. You know, it's just great of Jerry to do that for the first responders, just of his own volition. So thank you, Jerry.
Absolutely, thank you, Jerry. All right, moving on, property management fund audit. Brock, did you want to talk about this later?
Yeah, I guess kind of the point we're at right now is we need to get some dates together so we can schedule a tour with city councils to go around our different properties. So I guess maybe we'll get Paula on it and see if we can get everybody lined up and get that done.
What do you think would be better? Do you think morning, evening tour? What are you, what are you thinking of that? And when I'm saying evening, I'm saying like four or five.
Four or five? You go about four or five, you're not going to have, you know, your, most of your employees are gonna go home about 3:00. A little cooler in the morning. I guess it really matters on, you know, what works out best for all of you. I'm, I'm for you whenever.
The answer I wanted, but thank you, Brock.
Let's do the evening.
Okay, that's, that's a lot better.
We didn't want to make the decision, Brock. Yes.
All right.
Actually, I just thought of something, like, evening would be better, our buses would be available.
Good job, Steve. Just a little slower. Let him marinate there for a little bit. There you go. Moving on to unfinished business, Mrs. Harris.
Unfinished Business is a second reading of an ordinance making supplemental appropriations to the Outdoor Conservation Fund for the calendar year 2025. So this is the same item that you addressed last week when I was not here. I don't remember whether, I did watch the meeting, but I don't remember whether there was much discussion.
I think Alyssa was here to explain.
That's right.
I watched some of the meeting.
Well, anyways, I make a motion to approve the ordinance making supplemental appropriations to the Outdoor Conservation Fund for the calendar year 2025.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion?
We did have a pretty robust discussion. Last time I feel it wasn't just...
That was a lot nicer than anyways, like Jeremiah said. There's no further discussion, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. New business, committee and board reports. Any committee and board reports?
I'll go, yeah, sorry. Parks and Recs. Port from Roof is on Recreation Side. Baseball had 280 participants, which is about the same level that they were at last year. Had 15 community members sponsor teams. So thank you to those sponsors out there for sponsoring the kids of La Junta. Secondary golf course, there's been an issue come up with the software that runs the sprinkler or air sprinkler system at the golf course. Brock, is there anything else, like, specific about that, or?
The best way to put it is, it's just aging out, and being able to find parts. The only way that we can get things repaired right now is if we send those parts off and they're rebuilt, and then you gotta wait for it to come back. So in the meantime, the guys at Lawrence and Donald out to the cemetery, how did the golf course have got to turn those valves off and on manually? I know Bill tried a couple of years ago to get it on a supplemental. It's just kind of one of those things that's, it's time for that to be upgraded, and we're kind of a little bit on borrowed time with it.
So is that something we're looking at for the budget?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. On to Potter Park, was something that was brought up, and this would be something between the city and the school, but they're looking and wanting to make improvements. This isn't something that's out there. This is, you even talked about doing a work session to discuss some of those improvements they're looking at, or artificial turf for the both fields, little potter, big potter. We're doing the press box in the bathrooms there. So just stuff that's coming up, the same thing, these things have aged out, and it's time for some updating, but that's a little bigger project. So I think Brock is thinking we'll have a work session on that, and some discussion about that, and how we go about that. So another thing, tennis courts, which have kind of gone over, but that deal's, a done deal. So end of the year, beginning of next year, they'll be working on the tennis courts at the city park. Great deal. And then the last thing was Tippy Martinez, the scoreboard at Tippy Martinez is, is it completely down, Brock?
I probably told you, Tippy Martinez, it's actually a little potter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's completely down. Another thing, kind of like everything else, the board's probably from the 1980s, we can't find a replacement at this point.
So looking at updating that, they're gonna look at getting some sponsorship, kind of like they did at Veterans Field Players, see if we can get some local businesses to sponsor that and help, help with that.
Was veterans from another, wasn't it from Tippy? Their old scoreboard?
Veterans? We just replaced the scoreboard at Veterans three years ago, I think.
Where'd the scoreboard come from?
That scoreboard that's there at Vets Now is a brand new one.
Oh, okay.
Had a local, had a local business sponsoring, I don't know, fully sponsored or, or majority of that?
About half.
Was it farmers and insurance?
Yeah, it was farmers and insurance.
Randy.
Lauren?
All right, I've got two committees. Planning met last Thursday, kind of off schedule, but we had two citizen requests for variance approvals. One is for a home dog grooming business, and the other was for a carport. Both passed, but the takeaway, and Joe will appreciate this, they both asked for permission, not forgiveness, and we appreciated them for that. Both, both of the residents that did the applications went through the process, and I, I think it was smooth for them, and anyway, we just, we appreciate people seeking out how to do things the right way, instead of going ahead and asking forgiveness later, or being surprised when they are asked to tear it down. So that's it for planning. And then the library board, the advisory committee had a retreat on Friday morning with Chelsea Coleman, and just want to give a shout-out to the five members of the library board. We've got Holly Huerta Hudak, Terry Smalling, Sarah Holt, Julie Worley, and Nicholas Burdick, who are very committed, and I appreciate their service to our community and the library. And we had a great conversation, we reviewed the charter. I'm the council rep to the committee, and realized that we're supposed to be doing an annual report to the council. So the library advisory board would like to request to be on the agenda for the September 2nd, to have a moment to kind of review the advisory board's recommendations for the year. It's timely with the budget and whatnot. The two fun facts that I thought were worth mentioning is that there is research that thriving communities have libraries, and thriving communities also have higher property values. So a good reason to support our libraries. And also, this is interesting, libraries are the second most trusted institution in the United States, next to the Red Cross. So not a bad institution to come in second to. So obviously, a very pro-library crowd, but it was, it was three hours well spent, and appreciate the folks who dedicate their time to supporting the library. Quick update, summer reading program has wrapped up. It was June 2nd through July 19th. I think these are impressive numbers. They had 277 kids sign up and 100 made adults. Way to go adults for reading in the summer, too. They had 23 different activities, opportunities for engagement in the program, with nearly 2,000 people showing up to those 23 opportunities. So well done, La Junta, well done, library. And that's all I've got.
I guess I'll, I'll talk briefly about Urban Renewal, in case it comes up to any council members that aren't watching the Urban Renewal meeting. So at the last Urban Renewal meeting, I wasn't even there, but I had to watch it on our Facebook feed, which is always a nice plus when you can't make it. They, they talked about the plaza building and the parking lot next to the plaza building. And there was some discussion on who should be in charge of repairing and maintaining the parking lot. Now, that parking lot is city property, the parking lot is, okay? There's two parking lots there. Both of those parking lots are city property. One parking lot is leased to the Plaza Building, Urban Renewal, and then the other one is leased to Perkins, okay? So, you know, there was, at first, they, it kind of seemed like SCCCP wanted Urban Renewal to maintain that, and Urban Renewal was at, like, why are we gonna maintain this and fix it when it's the city's property? After doing some research, myself, Michael, Brock, and Martin met with members of Urban Renewal, and SCCCP, and former members of Urban Renewal, and we found a lease that Urban Renewal signed, saying they would be in charge of maintaining that property and fixing it if it needed to be. Now, what's going on is that parking lot is set at a way that when we do get rain, it is going into the north door, and we were worried about it damaging the floor that was just put in there. Okay, there was arguments on whether it should have been done before or after. But what they've done is they've kind of made a little trench cut out right there for now to fix for, for what that's gonna be, but they're gonna have another meeting to go over what their ultimate fix is gonna be. When I say they, I'm talking about Urban Renewal. The city will try to work with them wherever we can, but it will not be on the city to repair or replace that, that parking lot this time. The quote that came in was like 380,000, I think, Brock, or the?
Close enough.
Close enough. And Martin's like, that's my whole budget for the year, I can't spend that on a parking lot. So, and that's not done through us, that was a bid out from the contractor that's doing it, he was there as well, too. They, they said they didn't account for a bunch of things when they originally quoted it, and now they have a lot more, the scope of work that they want to do. So if you guys were asked about that, or were, you know, wondering about that, that's where we stand on that at this point.
Is that the space between Perkins and the Plaza Room?
Yes, so, so it doesn't look like a huge parking lot, but it's two. And one of it is Urban Renewal, and the other one is Perkins. The city owns it, owns the both, but they're leasing those both out. All right, city manager comments.
Okay. Some of the membranes on the vessels at the RO plant have been going bad. They did get some replacement membranes. They did receive a quote for the building that's supposed to go around the press for wastewater. This, this one's kind of cool. Tom had some, some funds left over because of a partnership with, I believe it's Resources Central, and he called me up, and he's like, hey, do you want any trees? And I was like, we always want trees. So we were able to put 45 trees in either at City Parks Department, or at the Cemetery, or at the golf course. So if you see a bunch of little trees out there, that was, that was, we didn't have to, I, Parks Department didn't have paper, anyway, but anyway. So that was kind of cool. Pool closes this Sunday, August 10th. August 16th is the dog day, from 10:00 to 2:00. We're currently taking youth football and youth volleyball registrations. Martin let me know that this week, they're gonna be painting all the crosswalks around the schools before school starts on Monday. And then after that, probably next week, they're gonna start the curb and gutter project on 10th and Barnes, right there where it was washed out during that little flood down Brick and Tile. So he's gonna curb and gutter from Barnes about up to that guardrail on the Arroyo. So, and that's all I've got.
So there's water, that pool's there, I guess you guys will notice, even when it's not a massive, you know, little once-in-a-lifetime flood that goes through, there's water that pools there every time it rains. So they're gonna, they're gonna cut it into the Arroyo, correct?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a big drain there on 10th, and then they'll, they'll, they'll feed it out into the Arroyo. So hopefully mitigate some of that if it ever, when it ever happens again.
So that's the plan. If we would have been a little bit more forward-thinking, we would have done it before they laid the sidewalk, but we still got, we'll still get it done. It's just gonna be one section that's gonna...
Yeah, just one section, I believe that he's got to take out.
Do you want to explain dog days and what that, what that is, and what, what the expectations are of dog owners?
Thank you for that.
We've actually had pretty good luck with it over the years, but the idea is that, you know, you can bring your dog to the pool the last day it's open. We went, of course, all vaccinated. You know, we would discourage dogs that might be a little bit aggressive. We wouldn't like those dogs there. There's always one, it seems like. And if you've got a rowdy dog, probably keep him on a leash for a little bit before he goes up and starts sniffing around or whatever. But we've had, we've had good luck. I can't think of any, any incident that we've had over the probably 15 years that we've had it. And we usually pull in about somewhere between 40 and 60 dogs. So we only go two hours, because that's about all the pool can handle. There's a nice little layer of fur flowing across the top, you can see it, and a smell, there's a certain smell.
Did you say it's like wet dog?
Little, little wet dog, little something else, probably. So, but yeah, it's, it's a good event, we do have a pretty good turnout for it, so. My dogs are not well-behaved enough to go.
Is there a charge?
It's donations, and then whatever we do get, we end up, we'll go to associated charities, and probably some will go towards our canines.
The date and time again?
August 16th, Saturday, August 16th, from 10:00 to 12:00.
Hey, now, you made me forget when I talked about Police in the Park. Hank and Odin were both there, and they were the stars of Police in the Park, so those are our canines for PD, so.
And the budget meeting.
And the budget meeting.
Hank and Odin make the rounds.
Yes, so, those are the popular people there. I just got a text from Chris Arroyo, he says they identified that the power lines were down on Fourth and Colorado. The fire department and the line crew are on their way, so they're already working on it. All right, any questions for Brock?
I don't know if, if you know, or Joe, maybe you highlighted this on Wednesday, a work session with, I thought it was planning, Michael Yermin and the...
The sign, yeah, good call.
Yes. So people that don't know, Michael Yermin helped us do all of our zoning updates that we did two years ago, or two years ago. He was able to work with us through a grant that paid for his time to work with the City of La Junta. And now what we're gonna be doing is we're going to be doing a zoning update to our sign code. And Michael is going to be back with, with that same type of grant, so it's not costing us anything. But anybody, like Damon or anyone else, that's so... Yes. So people that don't know, Michael Yermin helped us do all of our zoning updates that we did two years ago, or two years ago. He was able to work with us through a grant that paid for his time to work with the city of LaHunta. And now what we're gonna be doing is we're going to be doing a zoning update to our sign code. And Michael is going to be back with that same type of grant, so it's not costing us anything. But anybody, like Damon or anyone else that's so inclined to attend a sign workshop, work session, I'm sorry, work session about sign codes and everything that's in it, that's the time to actually come and talk to us. If you think, you know, why would, why would you only let a five-inch letter be on a window, or whatever that's gonna look like, that's the time to really give us your input. After we accept it and do all of that, it's, it's really hard to change at that point. So make sure, what is the date and time?
It's Wednesday, the 6th, at 4:00.
There you go.
Here. And we won't take, the planning committee won't be taking any action.
No.
It's just presentation.
Presentation, it's discussion, it's a back, if, if there's people. It's a, it's a back and forth. If not, it's just Michael telling us, you know, you should do this, and here's why. And we agree, we disagree. But yeah, that'd be really good. All right. In case anyone was wondering why Brock is sitting in that chair right now instead of Michael Hart, Michael Hart is in Chicago for a Brownsfield conference. That Brownsfield conference is paid for completely, not by the city of LaHunta. It's, I don't know if you want to call it a grant, scholarship, whatever that is, scholarship. So he is attending that in Chicago this week, him and Pam Dennehy. But just so everybody's clear, that the city's not paying for him to do that. So if you guys hear anything like that, just know that that's not the case. So Brownsfield, you guys may have known, we got the Brownsfield grant, probably about two or three years ago as well, too, in the amount of 500,000. What they do is they go and they find ways to, well, first to see if your, your property needs any type of abatement, or what's wrong with the property, if they can find ways to abate it. That's this part of the Brownsfield that we're in. Once it is found that, you know, yes, it has asbestos or any other underlying issues that they can, you're eligible for another grant to help remedy the situation. So either removal or remediation side of that, you got, you could potentially be eligible for that. I know they've been working hard on identifying a lot of different properties. These are all, also, a lot of them are private property owners. So whether they choose to take up the Brownsfield on that, that's a whole different circumstance. So they are looking through properties. I don't know which, if any, have been selected at this point, but that's, that's basically what they do. They help remediate or remove like asbestos, mold, and stuff like that. Governing body comments? Any governing body comments?
I'll start. First of all, I'd like to thank the light cards. They've done such a tremendous job, and they do every year. But, you know, we were there today, and it, you know, just dawns on you that they're giving up their summers so you could have a summer. And even though it's all, they're working at the pool, and that, that might seem like a cool job, it's probably stressful, and comes with a lot of responsibility. So they do a tremendous job. And I'm glad Brock's here, and we relay that to them, please, and the staff, and everybody, anybody associated with the pool. Does a tremendous job. I'd also like to thank the street crew and Martin and Toyo for taking care of the cleanup of South Bradish there. There used to be just some tall trees and insanely tall weeds there that have been, that were just collecting trash. And they got that cleaned up. And they did replace a pipe that was just filled with so much sediment, dirt, and trash that it was no longer, water was overflowing on the roadway. So that was, that was a detriment to our streets. So thank you for that. And from ABRMC, Mr. Ron Hogan, new interim CEO, started this past week. And I'll meet with him on Friday, get to know him a little better. So I may extend him an invitation to come to council, see if he has time for that. He's gonna be a busy guy, unless you've already done.
I have a meeting with him on Wednesday morning. So I'll tell him that Paula will invite him later.
All right.
Any other governing body comments?
Perhaps better in the event announcement, but I'll go ahead and throw it out. The police department is doing their citizens academy again. It starts August 19th. It's Tuesday and Thursday evenings, and then one Saturday. I've done it. I know Lisa's done it. I don't know who else has done it. But I highly recommend, I found it to be a really good experience. And anybody who wants to know, if you are questioning the ins and outs and how and why our police department does what they do, this gives you, I think, 10 evenings to learn everything you ever wanted to know about the ins and outs. So highly recommend contact Chief Quick if you're interested. And then I just want to give a shout out to the fire department. There was a fire in an office at Otero College last week, and Brad and crew showed up. And I was super impressed with how professional and quick they showed up. And just want to give a shout out to the fire department. It was just smoking by the time they showed up, and nobody was hurt. So, thank you, Brad.
Nancy, did you do Police Academy, Citizens Academy?
Yeah. I would recommend it also.
Thank you for that. Just real quick, there was a, there was a women's group, they're called Cafecito of Denver. They started in 1991. They invited me to be a part of their monthly meeting. It was about Ben's Fort and how they can help save Ben's Fort in a way because of the issues that's coming up with, you know, the interior and exterior Ben's Fort. And they, they just wanted to find out ways they could help. During the call, we talked about a number of issues. It was myself, representing LaHunta, and Donda Prince, who used to be, well, she still is a native to LaHunta, but she is now with History Colorado. And there were a couple of people on there that are going to attempt to have the governor come to Ben's Fort to take a tour. So when I know more about that, I will shoot out an email to you all and let you know what that looks like. There have been invites as well to Congressman Jess Hurd and Congresswoman Lauren Boebert, both of them have reached back out. So we're just kind of seeing what those schedules look like to, to do that, if we do everyone at once, or if we do some separate, separate events. So just keep that in your mind. At Police in the Park, I was getting a good conversation with our new code enforcement officer. And he says that the online way of turning in what you may believe to be a code enforcement violation is working really well for him. He says he checks that every morning, and he always has a couple in there. It helps them because they can't be everywhere at once. But if they know something that's really bad, they go and check those right away. If they deem them to be credible, then they talk with the owners and they go from there. But while I was talking to him about that, I started thinking, well, what about the other things that we started doing on the website? So I, I reached out to Martin, and he said that the pothole one gets used a lot on the website. Not so much the signs, that's like either a stop sign, or a slow children at play sign, stuff like that. He says that only one person has utilized that, but the pothole sign has been utilized a lot. Well, two, and they have been able to service more potholes as you're with, with that. So it's not about turning in someone that you deem to be not following the rules. It's like, okay, you saw it, but you want to make sure someone else knows about it. It's, it's in your daily scope, but it's not always in our officers. And I know everyone thinks that they're just cruising around doing stuff, but that's not what's going on. They're getting calls. There's kind of a dog issue that we have in LaHunta right now, loose dogs, I would say. That takes at least 30 to 45 minutes per dog call. So if he's, that's a third easy. So if he's out and he's doing weed violations, or he's doing junk vehicle violations, and a dog call comes in, that takes precedence over that, that weed, weed violation or the, or the junk vehicle. So then he's out, hopefully, it's a nice dog that'll just come right up to him and go from there. But if not, you know, that he's, that's to catch him, then he's going out to the pound and doing paperwork, and all that, so I'm coming back. So just know that code enforcement is working really hard, but it's, it's a lot of properties out there that aren't doing it the way they should. But, you know, we're gonna work on it. But yeah, so if you go online, you can find that under the police tab. And then the other one would be under the, the street department tab for potholes. So make sure you guys are utilizing that. Anything else going on? All right. Thank you all for coming out. I appreciate it. This meeting is now adjourned.
For LaHunta City Council, with your southeast Colorado news, I'm Adrian.